Okay, thanks for coming everybody. We'll call the meeting to order and start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, start with the approval of the agenda. Paul, anything?
No.
Dan?
Just a little bit concerned on the new business, the 504 Development subdivision. It just popped up today and I was just looking through it and there's some conflicting numbers.
Okay, when we get to that then just bring that up and we'll talk more about it.
Yeah.
Anything else Ryan?
No.
No? Okay, we've got a couple changes. We're gonna replace F1A, which is the subdivision variance, with F1AI and F1AI2 and F1A3. Remove F1D, which is the minor subdivision for the Dursburgs and Durs property. And we're gonna move G3, the 504 Development subdivision, final PUD to H2 under new business. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Ryan, do you have a second?
Yes, sir.
Thanks Paul, in favor said aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, questions, comments for administration on the consent agenda. Hearing done, I entertain a motion to approve.
I like that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm down to, I don't have any cards, lend any cards, no? Okay. Public hearing, vacation of public right-of-way and creation of a drainage easement, that's E1 in your packet. May have a chance to get that open. This is for the East Creek 2 subdivision, Industrial Park. We've had this a couple different times, so any comments or questions from council before we open it up for public hearing? Okay, open the public hearing regarding the public right-of-way vacation and creation of the drainage easement in the East Creek 2 subdivisions in Industrial Park. Anybody from public have anything they'd like to say? Okay, close the public hearing. Any discussion from council? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the resolution vacating the public right-of-way and creating the drainage easement.
I make the motion to approve.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And on this, I have to have a roll call because we're vacating the land, so I need to have each person individually. Paul?
Yep.
Dan?
Yep.
Aye. So if I do nothing on that, then we'll have a document for everybody to sign on that as well. Okay, next is the nuisance abatement. Ian, you wanna give us a little history on that before we open the public hearing?
I will, yes. So, we've discussed this particular property a number of times throughout the course of this year. Complaints on this particular property date back as far as May of this year. We've received multiple complaints from multiple property owners multiple times regarding junk items and items that create harbors for vermin at the property. So, in response to these complaints, the city has delivered multiple letters to the property owner notifying them of the violations and giving them a certain amount of time with which to respond to the complaints. Each time, the property owner has insufficiently responded to each of the violations provided there. Council previously guided staff to seek out alternative options rather than doing a full abatement, which included a report to the State Department of Human Services. After that, route did not go through as intended. We're left here with the abatement of the property.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from council before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll open the public hearing regarding the nuisance abatement on 7th Street Northwest. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, come on up to the microphone, give us your name and address and public comments.
So I'm up here for my dad. He lives on 177th Street, right next door. Biggest question I had is, is there water and sewer there? Does anybody know?
I guess I would assume there has to be, it's a city lot.
You do have counts for water and sewer, that's correct.
Okay. I just, I just seen the stuff, I see her at the landfill and it's getting to be the same way it was before. We put rat traps up, not traps, but bait stations. And I know other neighbors had found a bunch of them dead underneath, like their, what do you call them, storage boxes for like their winter stuff. We have some different pictures that are, if you're interested to see.
Thanks Mike.
When the stuff blew over the last storm, a lot of food was outside. And I don't know if that's helping, you know, with animals. We had a raccoon we had to call the cops on because it was acting strange. You had to come take care of it. Don't, I don't know where it came from or why, but it's just kinda weird, certain things. I don't know what else. It's going back to the same.
Yep, thank you. I mean, we see the picture and our hands are...
Yeah.
We're doing everything we can with this abatement. We try to get some state help for it, or they decline to help, the county, everything else. So it's like, we're kinda limited on what, we can't really, we clean it up every so often and then she's gonna put it right. We try to get her some help, but it's...
Yeah.
We just don't know what to do.
As far as, like, well, you gotta say, like, the tent's in better shape, so it ain't keeping that awake now, but it's still...
Okay. Well, we'll keep doing what we can do. We're gonna, you know, I'm assuming we're gonna approve this abatement here tonight and we go in and clean it up again and hope we don't have to do it again, but I'm anticipating that...
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, okay. Thanks Mike. Come on up.
He talking about me? I'm the one that's saying this.
Okay.
I cleaned up every time. I wanted, left alone and stopped stealing and stuff. We're supposed to have a writ of confiscation from a county judge, not even us. The last time they came over to come, shedded his building and everything up, that was off by then. They refused to bring me the paperwork, just wanted to get mine, whatever. The cops wouldn't bring it. It wouldn't go anywhere, because they kept destroying it every time I moved. I don't want my threats to be that long. What's out in the yard right now is too high of the depth of what I'm in. Everything else is in the shed except the garden and the stuff behind the building. And the city told, the administrator told me that stuff was fine.
But what we do about the food and the rats and the stuff, but it keeps coming back?
I have trash cans. They don't take it, have guys pick them up on Monday because it's twice as expensive as taking it over there. Trash cans are fine. I can't help what wanders out of the woods, you know? A lot of animals are out in the woods. There are rabbits under the neighbor's shed, he wanted to bet something.
Okay. I appreciate you coming in, it's the first time I've had a chance to meet you.
Well, I come to City Hall and they refuse to let me talk to anybody.
We just really need to help you in some way to be able to keep it clean.
I can't afford to do that, but I'm so scared and everything, but you wanna find me like five, six grand, I've never been helped.
Well, but, and I totally understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, ten guys stand your own nose to the ground. I got charged for ten guys.
Right, so we cleaned it up a year ago, year and a half ago, two years ago, two years ago.
Two or three, somewhere in there.
And over this last summer, I mean, this isn't...
I had to buy a shed and I had to wait till the loan came through.
I totally understand, but I mean, this isn't just deck stuff and things that you're going, well, I mean, that's garbage you went to the dump and got.
No, it isn't. Neighbor's mind like hell. He even, my niece was in the tent. We came and she was in the tent window and screamed and yelled at us at six in the morning. She's been pulling all sorts of shit for years. First year I lived, they called the cops. Let's see, six, now it's ten times on. The yard wasn't loaded and I had probably come here two weeks. He's done other things. He watched them steal my trailer out of my yard and other stuff.
Okay.
And he laughed about the farm, carrying, dragging it down the road with a chain. Then they called the cops. He's yelling at all my friends and relatives that come by, screaming at them. I shouldn't have to go through that shit all the way. Right now I'm waiting for them all to get fixed, you know, once everything's picked up.
Okay, well, if everything's picked up and we have this abatement, there won't be anything to abate then, correct?
Yeah. And I want the paperwork I'm supposed to get. The state code says you're supposed to send it to me, registered letter, detailing exactly what you're complaining about each time, not just every day filling out the blank of, I don't know what you call it, the statutes. If the statutes violate county, state or feds, then they are not valid and confiscation was not the ultimate.
Okay.
The city has an ordinance that it...
It doesn't matter.
That it proceeds under...
Are above you. They violate, if you violate my rights by not following the state.
And what that allows you is due process, and that is...
I didn't like it, due process, when I didn't see how it failed last time. I only found out the day of it, so they kicked me out.
After the abatement, you received the bill for it, is that what you're saying?
No, they were supposed to bring me paperwork to, since I have mental health issues and anxiety, just, they're not supposed to set short term. The county made a promise, he didn't say sixty days when you ever had a problem. The lady said that you guys are not allowed to say health code violations because not here trained in it and other things that are in the statute. But the statute's higher up than you say that there can be sixty days for compensation and other things.
I'm actually familiar with that statute. I can provide that to you. I know which state statute you're referring to, but it does give city staff the ability to do inspections for, to do inspections for public health issues.
Not when there's, neighbor sneaks in the yard, takes pictures, that really don't like taking them windows and other shit. No, lady, you should like, take the eyes staring.
I appreciate you coming in and sharing that with us. We're gonna proceed with what we feel needs to be done to keep the neighborhood healthy and safe.
I know, but I do not want these sudden surprises, like you got it showing up.
But you got a registered letter last week, right?
The day, they said it was fine, came back the next day, it took down the shed that was almost done being built.
Right, so you've been notified about this time because the registered letter was sent to you?
Yeah, last week, about a week and a half after everybody in America got it. They don't do it in a timely manner.
But you're here tonight, so you got the letter and you're able to come in and say your piece?
Yeah.
But you're...
But I want the paperwork, I've never got it. Something needs to be...
I think you got everything you need from the city. Well, from the city, it's the city cast and it's not the state of Minnesota that covers the ordinance for the city.
They don't give me the paperwork, can refuse to go get it. Steal my, I read my rights.
You can take that up with your attorney and our attorney. But we're following the ordinance like we're supposed to, and this has been ongoing for a lot of years and we've tried to get you some help.
Oh yeah, my attorney. Nobody's come by, nobody's talked to me. I usually come in until I can look.
We're gonna continue to try to help you, but we have to get the neighborhood cleaned up.
It is.
Okay, well, if it's all clean when they get there, there won't be anything to abate.
I'm trying to find where it is. I've gotten it under storage rules with my insurance company. Ladies at the office told me I can't remove this house, no person will be able to.
Okay, well, if everything's compliant when they get there, there won't be anything to abate, but if there is something to abate, they're gonna abate it, if the council passes it. And if you don't like the way it happened... I'm not gonna be there for that, so...
Ground ducks do not eat birds, so you have to put permanent permits for it. I've got part of it done, I'm doing the rest.
Okay. Well, I hope it's all clean when they get there so they don't have anything to do. But if it's not, they are gonna abate it, we're within our rights, we are going to do that. So I thank you for coming tonight and...
Do it on any given day, you have to get a notice.
We'll follow the law the way it's supposed to be followed.
The words, my paperwork, they have to follow.
You got the notice last week.
I know, but the other time I didn't, it said something about, it said it was a mental health issue. They're supposed to give the enforcement, get the fine, whatever they can.
You'll have everything that we need to do legally for it to happen.
I don't have the statement.
Well, we're gonna follow the rules like we did last time and...
No, you don't.
Just because you don't like them doesn't mean it's not the rules, so...
I know, but it's not the rules when you don't give me the paperwork to use the question.
Well, we'll look at that, but I mean, we're gonna follow the laws, the law needs to be followed. And I really wish we could get you some help to help keep it clean, because I really don't wanna do this again. You shouldn't have to go through this again.
I don't want anybody to tell you that this is a security thing. We're not protecting the lawn, or we did what we put. All the screens are closed, all that.
They won't, as long as it's inside a storage...
It's in a storage.
Can't just be under tarp.
It's not under tarp, so it's going to be used in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
I'm getting sick of being told they have to be permitted, things have, even your steps, you say, ground ducks under eighteen inches, I do not need a permit.
I'll just stop you there, we're not here to talk about permits tonight, we're here to clean up the neighborhood. For everybody, including, including you. I mean, we're cleaning up for including you, right? Because you don't need to live where there's rats.
But you have a house in this yard, not my cop shop, you have nothing about him. It's all this addition, but the tarp.
We're talking about your property right now?
Yeah, well, you have to provide equal...
You're correct.
This is a public health issue because of the infestation. That's the problem.
There is.
Oh, well, who doesn't when they live next to us?
I hear ya. But thank you for coming tonight. We're gonna go ahead and continue the meeting, I appreciate your feedback. I don't know if there's anything else we can discuss right now that's gonna make you happy, but thank you for coming in. You have a right to come in and tell us how you feel, I'm glad you did. And we'll continue on doing what we need to do as the city for everybody, and we hope we can get you the help you need as well.
That has to have so many days.
We will follow the letter of the ordinance to give you the notice you need to make it happen.
I'll wait two weeks and then they'll help.
It'll be provided to you when it needs to be provided to you, so we satisfy the ordinance and they give you the notice.
I would assume it'll be seven days, but what's the limit? You said you know about this statute?
No, I am familiar with the statute that gives city and its staff the right to inspect for public health issues.
And we'll provide the ordinance to you with the notification, so you've got the whole thing. Okay?
I'm here with paperwork.
Okay, thanks for coming. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, have anything? Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we need to do the abatement, assuming that it still needs to be abated, and to follow the notification rules. We'll have our attorney double check that with what we do before we send the notification, but it needs to be done, not only for the neighbors, but for her. I don't know how we get her the help she needs, but basically, I don't know what we do. But, so, I'll make the motion to continue with the abatement. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Eight, four to one with Paul. Aye. Onto F1, the planning commission. Let's see, we took F1A off, replaced it with F... Let me get to the... Okay. So do you just wanna go over this, Tim?
Sure, you know, I'll start it and then I'll be in, fill in some of the details. And I think our applicants are here in the back as well. So, Planning and Zoning received application for a property which was a subdivision variance and a minor subdivision to allow for construction of a slab-on-grade home in, off of Lot seventeen, Lot seventeen, eighteen, block twenty-five of a plat on Second Street Southwest. So included in there is information that you can see, based on feedback from the planning commission, I think that they asked staff to look at an alternative arrangement. As we know, variances are not necessarily always perfect, and sometimes when you, when you do one thing, it creates another issue. So, what we're hoping to do is alleviate any concerns that the Planning and Zoning Committee had, based on that. And with that, go ahead Ian, and you can speak to the other documents that are included in the packet tonight.
Great, so the applicants, they were at the planning commission meeting afterwards, but I explained the details from the public hearing and the action from the planning commission to them. And what we, what the applicants came back with is an access agreement that would allow the property owner of Lot seventeen to access the side of their property through Lot seventeen. So there's about a five-foot easement included in the draft agreement included in your package tonight. And with that, they withdrew both of their applications for the minor subdivision and the variance. So, going forward, once this access agreement gets recorded at the county level, it would be free to move forward with their proposed manufactured home.
Okay, so no council actions either, just a...
No council actions tonight, just an update.
Okay.
Lot seventeen would give the easement to Lot eighteen, not seventeen to seventeen. You said seventeen to seventeen.
No, eighteen is giving it to seventeen.
Eighteen is giving it to seventeen, but you said both. Oh, so Lot seventeen will have a five-foot access agreement that they're giving to Lot eighteen in order to make sure they're able to maintain their property line. So the current owner owns both lots, but that would be, I think the expectation is that both lots will have it recorded on each, the easement agreement will be recorded with eighteen and with seventeen, so that when anyone does a title search, it shows up on both lots.
Okay, and staff will take care of that?
That's right.
Yep, with their recording, okay. Anything else on that? Any questions from council or comments?
Yeah, if there's no objections, I think staff will move forward with the applicants.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, on to B then. Preliminary plat for East Creek Commercial Park Second.
Yes, so, this property is a... With applicants, Don Marty is proposing to subdivide this parcel into one lot and then put a building on that lot. And then there's going to be a couple of outlots on the property. One is gonna be an outlot A, which is the current site of a KM Telecom structure, so it's considered an essential service in that sense. Another outlot B is the large remainder of the proposed subdivision. And so that will be held in place for the time being until the remainder of that lot is developed, if and when. And so with that, you'll also see on the preliminary plat that the water main easement has been added, paralleling the already recorded sewer main easement. It also includes a dedication of right-of-way for the south half of Third Street Southeast. And you'll also notice that there's, the vacated Commerce Drive Southeast is also on the plat, which is now going to be a drainage and utility easement. So, just a couple of conditions of approval on this one, just the fees that will have to be paid for development. There was one note from the city engineer about continuing a tented utility easement throughout the site. I've communicated that with the WFE folks about getting that added to the plat. Another site plan review will follow of the plats as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ian on that, or Mel's comments from Planning and Zoning? Okay. Ryan and Mel, anything? Okay, thanks for your work on that, everybody. Don, appreciate it. So, I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution approving the preliminary plat for the property known as East Creek Commercial Park Second.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Thanks Paul, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, resolution passes. That's all we needed on that one. C, managed natural landscape ordinance.
Yep, so, I have an ordinance for you. There was a public hearing for this at the last planning commission meeting. Essentially what this is, is a state ordinance, a state statute that recently got passed that allows property owners within cities to have managed natural landscapes. So our ordinance, as written currently, doesn't explicitly prohibit for managed natural landscapes, but the planning commission felt that it was appropriate to add that language. So I've got that included in your packets tonight, along with some definitions that were also taken from that state statute as well. And based on the recommendations of the planning commission, I've added a definition for noxious weed as well, which will come from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture. That list gets amended from time to time, that makes sense, so.
Okay. Any questions for Ian on that? Was there any comments, public comments at the public hearing?
None.
No, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Mel, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. How are your move D? Onto recommendation on Eighteenth Street Northwest right-of-way.
Sure, in your package, you've got council action sheet and then some overhead sort of shots of that. The planning commission had this item referred to them by council after a previous meeting in September, so they did discuss and review the right-of-way issue there on Eighteenth. And after discussion, they recommended, the recommendation of council is to vacate the Eighteenth Street. I believe the thought process was if there's no intention of utilizing it for development, then it should not be held in that way.
Okay, so we're just gonna set the public hearing tonight.
So yes, including your package, you also have a draft resolution that you could approve. We'd like to see if that's what you'd like to follow, then we would ask you to order the vacation here.
Okay. So, basically, there's no future use for the city here?
Well, I think based on the feedback from planning and zoning, they felt that using the vacage road was probably gonna be the access for Mr. Shutey to the north, and there's a couple of other right-of-way sections in the Mr. Shutey, further north, twenty, I think. If you look at the plat from nineteen sixty there, it shows a couple of their accesses. And I, of course, Dan and Paul can speak to their thoughts too as well, they were at the meeting, but I think that was the gist of their conversation.
Okay. Any comments Ryan or Mel? Strong feeling either way? No, okay. Let's see what the public has to say about them. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution setting a public hearing on the vacation of the portion of public right-of-way at 401 Southeast, no, that's City Hall, on November eighth. We're not gonna, we could just give it away.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And we got, public hearing will be on November eighth, our next meeting, our second meeting in November, two from now.
First meeting.
Yeah.
First meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Ryan, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
We have a public hearing set for November eighth. The notice is out, so.
On time.
Did you make the motion, and the second?
I made motion, Ryan, second.
You did, okay.
Yep. I fumbled that one completely.
That happens.
I was reading the wrong line. All right. So we're on to old business, our favorite topic regarding the licensing of the number of dogs. So Tim, what solution did you come up with?
Well, after a discussion with staff, we talked about a couple of different options, trying to come up with something that would be the most cost-effective and we thought beneficial to the entire community. So what we're recommending is a pet amnesty period from October sixteenth through November first, where people who own more than three dogs would be able to go register as a penalty or fear of losing that animal. What we see in town is there are a lot of folks who have animals that are not licensed, so this is a big encouragement. We'll, of course, put that out through social media and however we can to try and encourage people to get them licensed, so they'd have that period to do it. And then after that, then, you know, ordinance would be in play. So for someone, you know, they would still face the possibility of being cited if they did it after that period of time when they're not licensed. Which, the nice thing about that is it allows folks who maybe didn't know, now they know. And as those pets leave their home, then that number would be restricted to three. The other option that I know that the resident came in and talked about, in some communities, for example, in Rochester, they do a special license for over three, you know, I think that there's a significant fee to have. And so we felt like that wasn't the best option, frankly. We'd like to keep the ordinance intact, and we felt like that was the best solution. So that's what the suggestion is for council. Of course, you know, you can decide whatever you want to do.
And a lot of the references last meeting about neighboring towns who allow it, like Dodge Center, I believe, allows it, but you have to have a kennel license, right? So they don't just allow you to have as many dogs as you want. There's a limit of three. If you have more than that, you have to apply for a kennel license. It's not a open thing. So a lot of the comparisons were the same.
The kennel licenses also end up being restricted to certain zoning, is that correct?
That's the issue. So residential zoning in Cassin doesn't allow for a kennel license.
Right.
I looked at that, hoping it would be an alternative, but it's not.
So, okay, with that.
And this is just for strictly only dogs?
Well, I think that, I mean, it makes sense to me, now as I read it, probably would be, we would restrict it, we would match the wording of the amnesty to what the code says, which I think restricts it to three dogs, or is it five total pets? Linda?
I think it's five total pets.
Yeah, so I think that would be what we'd put in the wording and what we'd put out to the public.
And we're only having them registered dogs, they're not registering any other pets?
No, I think that, once again, that's what we'd put out to. The concern for our resident was, of course, was dogs. And so that's what the council action sheet's focused on. But I think that we would numerate as pets as a whole.
We've always licensed cats when people license them, but we, with the amount of licensed cats that are in town, that's not the cats that are in town.
It's not a high number of licenses.
Yeah.
So hopefully we'll encourage people to get them licensed, because in the long run it benefits them, because, you know, if the police department does pick up an animal, we're able to get it back to the owners a lot quicker. And that's really our goal.
Sure.
I think that was one of the reasons we set it at five at the MS committee was, three? Excuse me, sorry, three. Because we have nowhere to take them when we don't know whose pets they are. We don't have a place, because when the police department comes in, there's not a lot they can do when there's a dog lost, because there's nowhere to take it right now. So limiting it to three helps prevent from that issue.
But I also think that, and I may be incorrect, I believe that this was complaint-driven to begin with, wasn't it?
With this particular resident, or?
No, with the initial, setting the number at three.
Sure, yeah, I think generally, I mean, our, it's only distant vacuum, they're created for a reason. I'm sure probably at some point in time, there was complaints, yeah.
Unleash dogs was part of that.
Yeah, that's how we got on the bill.
That was a big concern, part of that, and that's, it was all one encompassing series of events.
So my concern with the solution is that this is, it doesn't seem like a long-term solution. Like, three years from now, say somebody moved in, they didn't know they had the ordinance in place, and they've got five dogs, and then they find out, and they come to us, oh, we're gonna do another amnesty day. And if that's what we're gonna do, why have the ordinance at all?
Are you asking me, or?
I mean, just in general, like, are we gonna continue doing this every time, you know, somebody moves into town, doesn't realize that it's in place, and then, you know, violates it unknowingly? I mean, what, just doing this one time, you know, hey, you can get past the ordinance this time? I don't see that being a long-term solution. I kind of, I don't agree with having a significant fee to have a, you know, a permit over three, but it seems to make more sense to me to allow something like that with stipulations. And I think the complainant in question offered some conditions to being allowed to go over three, which, you know, I don't remember exactly what they were, but to me, that seemed like a better solution long-term than, I think, what's being proposed here.
In the history of Cassin, though, this is the first time we've ever heard of somebody having five. So I think now would...
That you've heard of.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm just saying, that we've heard of, that, so I just don't see, this is, to me, would work for now, because I don't see there's gonna be that increase of people coming in wanting five animals. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
I mean, I guess a big part of it is enforcement, and how hard, how strict is the council willing to be? You know, historically, I think that would be something that the police department, you know, if somebody comes in and they don't license their pets, they need to be cited. And what you've seen in the past is, and not necessarily this council, but somebody comes in, they got a citation, the police department gave them, and they bring it in, and they say, complain to council, and the council says, well, we'll waive that fee. You know, I think, you know, whatever choices the council makes, they have to be willing to back up the police department if they're willing to enforce the rules. You know, to your point, if somebody comes in and they don't know, obviously, we work with them, you know. Our goal is to inform the public the best we can, and that's one thing we're gonna be doing even more than we have in the past. And the police department needs to cite people, because without citations, there's no enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I certainly understand what you're saying. I don't think it's ideal, but from my perspective, it helped deal with the current situation that we see. It would encourage additional registrations, which hopefully deals with problems going forward. And by putting it out to the public as much as we can, you know, it lets people know, you know, that's a good point, you know. I think something we can do when we get people that register for utility bills, something I hadn't thought of, is maybe having that information for them, you know, is the licensing rules and regulations, because, you know, people do come in and they get their utility bills, and they hook up their utilities and things like that. Something I'm certainly willing to provide and have a handout for people, if we can add to their welcome bag, or whatever we need to do, to hopefully deal with your concern about the long-term effect.
Yeah. So I'm curious, if you can, if we go through with this, can you follow up after this happens and find out how many people register more than three?
Well, we certainly should be able to, yeah. That should be something that the police department will document, absolutely.
It's changing. My concern is, I mean, I could try something, right? See if we can get, we need the animals registered, fine. But two years from now, if somebody moves in from out of town, and they happen to have four dogs, they come in, they, oh, you get the utility bill, you got registered dogs, well, I gotta pick which three I want. I mean, really, as a council, I won't be here in two years, but really, as a council, say, that's right, rule of thumb is you missed the amnesty period, you moved to town, you gotta get rid of one of your dogs. Is there a way that we can add something?
I can't see anybody doing that.
Is there a way to add something? Because no one wants to take anyone's dogs away.
Right.
I don't think that's the purpose of the ordinance. Is there a way to add something? Could we add something to the ordinance that if you do move into town, you have a set number of days to register your dogs? And if you move in to Cassin from Byron with four dogs, you have that forty-five, sixty, ninety-day window to register your pet. If you have more than four, we allow it, but then it goes back to the rule of once that one pet passes on, you no longer can go above the three, or the five pets, cats and dogs. Which would be a long-term solution.
Sure. And I mean, I certainly think that's something, if we like to amend the ordinance, we can, we could take a look at that.
And I think that's probably more fair, because it's great that we're trying to come up with ways to publicize that this is going to be the deal, but again...
Not everybody's gonna get it.
Not everybody's gonna get it, and not every realtor's gonna put it in there, oh, by the way, this house has three bedrooms, two baths, and you can only have three dogs. I wish they would, but that's not the way the world works.
We have our ordinances for a reason. I mean, you're not supposed to park on city streets more than twenty-four hours, but people do that. People park their trailers for more than twenty-four hours overnight. We have the ordinances, and it's not that we're not trying to enforce them, it's just that they're for a reason, and we would assume or hope that your constituents and people that live here actually follow them. They might not know the rule yet, and when you present it to them, hopefully, they are a good enough person to actually follow that rule. If they don't know the rule, it's not their fault. Once they know the rule, then you would hope they follow it.
What is the fee for a licensed animal?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Twenty-five dollars, flight time?
It's not, it's not...
It's ten dollars a year, yeah.
But it's not exorbitant by any stretch.
I know plenty of people that have cats and dogs that I know are not registered. And then, and I, it's not because they didn't want to, it's because they probably didn't even know, to be honest.
Okay. So can you massage that a little bit?
Sure. Well, we can, we put out, you know, if the council doesn't object, is we'll look for this. It'll be dealing with all pets, to your point. And then I think that it would make sense for us to take a look at the ordinance and see if we can get a language change for more of a long-term solution to alleviate this concern when someone new moves to town.
On all pets, though, I hate to, fish, I know people have...
It's, the statute already has a definition.
It does, okay.
It's gotta be registered.
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. And it's presently limited, I think, to dogs and cats, because we can't have anything, I mean, I'm not going down the chicken road, but we can't have pot-bellied pigs and other critters in town, because they're specifically not allowed under our ordinance. And I'm not too worried about the fish going to the neighbor's house and...
No, I know. Just when he said pets, that's what I was...
Flashing too loud.
That's what I was...
Thanks.
Okay, so you'll keep working on that? Yeah, I can send out some updated language and we'll get that out. I guess, is that from council's feedback, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah. I like what Ryan said.
I think it does.
You know, if you have four, then you move it back, but then you can't only have three after.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the feedback.
Thank you. G2 Dodge Center Ambulance.
Sure. So include your package is information that I got from a recently attended meeting with the folks from Dodge Center Ambulance. And they're certainly willing to come and present us well, but I felt it was prudent just to provide this information to you. So there's two items there. You've got a presentation, and then you've also got some cash flow projections that they provided on what currently they're looking for from their contributing partners in the area. So you can see the information there, their statistics, how much they build. Last year, they built, well, twenty-twenty-two, they built just over one point seven million. The amount that they were paid was eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred eighty-four. So basically, what ends up happening is that Medicare reimburses at a very low rate, so that's what's basically the catalyst for them and many other departments, analyst departments in the state of Minnesota. For example, I think in the Post Bulletin today, they were talking about the Altura Department, which is kind of on its last legs. I know that the St. Charles Department was just taken over by the Lewiston Department, so there certainly is some issues, statewide issues in that. So that's presented for your information. They're gonna occasionally have meetings, which I'll be planning on attending, and if anyone's interested in attending, you know, certainly let me know. You can see the dollar amounts there. They are substantial, what they're looking at. And there are a couple of different models that they would be looking at. The one model is a, it's a taxing district, which would be created, and then it would be part of your tax bill, would be separate from any of the other, so sort of like the school district, or the city, or the township, or whatever, it would be on your bill separately. Another option would be a per capita tax and a joint powers association. What they were discussing at the meeting was more of an informal arrangement, but I encourage them to look at a formal arrangement, because I think that what one council can agree to, another council can disagree with, if there isn't some sort of formal structure put in place. And I think that's kind of what my encouragement was to them. So anyway, just information for y'all. If there's any questions, I'll certainly relay those to the folks in Dodge Center.
I've got a couple of questions. Why are they only collecting fifty percent of their bills? I understand Medicare doesn't reimburse them, doesn't reimburse, but generally, I would assume when you go to a hospital, insurance doesn't cover the full procedure, you're on the hook for the rest of it.
Yeah, Medicare only reimburses that amount, and so...
Right, so...
There's no means for them to collect that. It's actually against state law.
It's against state law. So the state law is preventing them from running their business?
It might actually be federal, Paul, because there was a, there was a big story about this on NPR a few years ago.
And I assume...
And it's not just a Minnesota problem, it's way worse than our states to the west.
I'm playing devil's advocate here, but I assume they're not allowed to deny service.
Well, I mean, it's a good question for the folks in Dodge Center, and as far as I know, they try to respond to all calls that they get.
Yeah, I'm just, it seems to me that you can't run a private business if you can't charge appropriate rates and collect it.
Part of their issue, too, is they show they can provide you service, but if you don't take a ride, and you can refuse a ride, they can't bill you.
Okay.
So that's another expense they have. And then nobody covers, but they still have to go. And that's...
And that's something that our fire department doesn't do very, if they go and don't actually do anything, they still get, we still bill them for showing up, right?
Not for medical.
Medical.
No, 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 for fire, yeah, because we talked about that with the fire stuff earlier.
Fire and medical are two different regulations on how you can do that. And if you refuse to go, and you have every right to refuse, then they can't bill. So who eats that? You know, that's, that's part of the state or federal regulations.
So it sounds to me that due to the regulations, that a private business really can't operate in this space.
Yeah, and it isn't a private business. It's the Dodge Center Ambulance, it's a public entity.
Oh, so this is run by the municipality of Dodge Center?
That's correct, yeah.
Oh, I assumed it was a private business that worked at a Dodge Center, and that's what their name was.
Look at the third page of your presentation there, it talks about it, it covers the central portion. So in our county, there also is Blooming Prairie, which is to the southwest, their ambulance service. The state of Minnesota's cut up into these districts, Blooming Prairie, Hayfield, and then north of there is the joint, joint powers from Zimbrota. So they cover that northern half of the county. And sometimes the folks from Steel County come over, too. So, yeah, no, this is, it's a public entity, and that's kind of why I think they're speaking to the other communities that are serving the area. As I said, it's a statewide, nationwide issue, really, with a lot of the folks who are retiring, who have been serving as volunteers for a long time, a lot of people not going into the field, and a lot of those issues, so.
Okay, thank you. I think the next meeting's at the seventh or so, right?
Yeah, it's coming up next month.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Tim. We remove three, we go for four. Development agreement, let's see here, revision, revision to East Creek, two development agreements, substance one.
Yeah, so the council did previously approve a draft version of this development agreement. However, there was one thing that was missed on the section seven L, which was to add that this sensing is requiring to be restored as a result of the development projects that the city would, you know, be responsible for restoring, restoring that. In addition to the prairie grass season that was already included under that number, so just that one revision.
So you're asking for the council to approve that agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, with that revision on L.
That's right.
Got it. Okay. Any questions for Ian on that? Makes sense to me. Undertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Paul. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On new business, final plat, East Creek Commercial Park Second.
Yep, so you're all familiar with the preliminary plat, so the final plat just comes with the same conditions that I had for the preliminary plat, just some fees to be paid, adding that ten-foot utility easement throughout the property, and then a site plan review as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ian on that? Okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Don. We moved three down to two, so five of four development subdivision, final PUD, let's see, planned unit development.
Yep, so we've received an application for a final PUD approval up in the Thompson division. And just to run through the history of this, back in twenty eighteen was the original PUD approval. Back in those days, it was required to have a CUP for the PUD. But that original approval, applicants decided that they wanted to amend the PUD to add an apartment complex. And so because of that amendment request, that triggered the new PUD approval process, which is to get approval for the preliminary PUD and the final PUD. So the preliminary PUD was accomplished through rezoning from the PUD six to PUD So the preliminary PUD was accomplished through rezoning from the PUD six to PUD R three, which that was completed in May of twenty-twenty-two. Um, so now we've come to the final PUD, um, which staff have completed a review of, and we've found that it's largely consistent with, uh, the preliminary PUD, uh, site plan review, plat nodes, site plan review nodes. Um, but the big thing with that is, uh, there's still some outlying items having to do with the grading plan and drainage report, so I do have that as a condition of approval, that, you know, I think those outstanding items will have to be resolved through a site plan review in order to complete the final PUD approval process. And if anything were to change as a result of that, that may trigger going through the full process again. Just to be aware of that.
Okay, thanks, Ian, Dan, you have something?
Oh, well, part of it is, is I, this just popped into our Dropbox ten hours ago, and I didn't have a lot of time to review it. As I was just looking through it at the meeting, one's plan says there's thirty-six apartments, one plan says there's thirty-three apartments, so it's like, I don't.
Building smaller too.
Yeah, so I just don't have time to, there's a lot of information here, it seems like, like it's been, if this has been ongoing for years, I wish we would have had more time to look at it, I just, especially when I see conflicting numbers. And I see also the, there's still no blacktop in the driveway, and there's people in living there. So I don't know if that's a, now, our ordinance for the city, because it's a gravel driveway.
Is it, the driveway's not complete yet though, right?
But, but, uh, for somebody to deliver, it doesn't have to have one lift.
I don't know.
According to city ordinance, we shouldn't have no gravel driveways. So there's standing water in that driveway.
So you want more time to look at it?
I would like more time, yeah, there was just, if that's okay. I just looking through pictures and it's different, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding each.
I think the numbers do need to match, so that we know that we're approving consistently.
Well, yeah, and I don't know if, if that was just a reference, you know.
Well, and I, I don't know if it was just an oversight on the one document that's different from the others, but it, it would be good to have the numbers consistent from document to document.
Especially if it was to be approved.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just reading through something here.
Can we ask the developer questions at this time?
Sure, sure.
Is there a reason, Aaron, it's thirty-three versus thirty-six in the two?
So, I, I'll give you a little bit of the history real quick.
Yeah.
Um, we originally were gonna do townhomes in front of our house due to the Excel easement, um, which has all been resolved, those townhomes were removed, and we looked to add to the apartment building, and the front of the house is now gonna be the retention pond, permitting all of the, the requirements. So it will be a thirty-nine unit apartment with underground parking from that standpoint.
So it's thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine.
So we'd say thirty-three and thirty-six.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I, I honestly don't remember the numbers, but it, it ended up, as the building got bigger and we did the grading plan, it, it was, you know, we're looking for thirty-nine, I still gotta make that fit, so it might be, might be a few less than that. We've gotta figure out what's the combination of two-bedroom, one-bedrooms, you know, from that standpoint. Um, Jamie could probably talk more to that, based on the development standpoint, but, so. Um, to address the blacktop, um, I used to, I specifically asked of, uh, city staff what was the requirement, and because it is a private drive, there, there was no, no timeframe, but it will be blacktopped. Soon as we get drywall delivered and some concrete in, it will be blacktopped before winter, so. My wife does not want a plow with gravel driveway.
Yeah.
So.
Although we had a different arrangement on that, I was trying to find it. I was issuing building permits before we had paved roads there, but I was understanding we allowed the building permit to be started with the, um, requirement that the driveway was paved before the studio occupancy, but I can't remember those years ago, it's been ongoing.
I mean, I specifically remember asking, I think I asked Tim, and he said, "That's Brandon questioning," and then I think you guys conferred and said.
Yeah, I think.
And said, "Because it's private, there's nothing that you can force me."
The idea was that the building we built, I think the, and I spoke with CMS about it, I don't think the intention was to issue those, so given the occupancy's before it was.
Well, like I said, it'll be, it'll be paved within, be, before winter at this point, you know, trying to.
Big beneficial to you, huh?
Yeah, definitely, definitely, yeah, yeah. Part of it is just we didn't wanna, you know, put more wear and tear on the road with all the heavy equipment, and the longer you can let it sit there, the better it gets packed, so. But I'm happy to answer any, any other questions at the moment. I was actually under the impression, talking with Brad, that the only thing I needed to provide was a landscape plan, and I think Ian saw the landscape plan come through, and then, um, Brandon reminded us that we had some other things to take care of, so we kinda caught the civil engineer off by surprise because he forgot he had to take care of those things, so, I think he worked through most of them, so.
No, it's still incomplete, we don't have the hydraulics with the low point and flooding the, potentially flooding the basement.
Okay, he, I remember him talking about that on Monday, right before he sent the stuff over to, to you and I, from that standpoint, so.
Is the, this is for Br, you, Brandon, and maybe you can ask too. With that retention pond being in the front property, is that any issue being that close to a school with kids and sidewalks, or is it?
No, there's certain standards regarding how ponds are built.
Okay, I just making sure.
Does it reduce your green space to the point where you're, because your lot is, it's still within city, do you have to have a certain percentage of green space in your pri, in your private yard, in your property?
Do you address in the PUD, is it not?
Yeah, it was thirty percent on the entire PUD, and then when we removed those front units and added all the green space for the retention pond, we, we definitely meet, meet that.
Is the retention pond green space, that's kinda what I.
Yeah, the retention is green space.
Thank you, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I look at it, it looks blue from my look.
Well, let's hope it's not full of water. Well, things are gonna be flooded if it's full of water.
That's what it's supposed to do, full of water. Ideally, yeah.
We have fish in ours.
Fish in ours, yeah.
Just to follow up on this driveway pavement, so, yeah, we said the private drive beyond the driveway can remain gravel, because you were kinda slamming it in, uh, back in winter of or fall of twenty-twenty-two, as long as it's paved by June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three, so.
Uh, well, we have one person living there, they've been there for, for a month, so, yes, we do have one person, but we're just trying to work through the, through the timing of, of the construction with all the heavy deliveries, so. And it will be paved all the way back to the fire hydrant, past, you know, basically past the two buildings, from that standpoint.
Have we had CMS go out and measure all this, so it still has the eight-foot setback from the, from the middle school, and all those numbers are, they've checked that, that all, everything fits?
I mean, the, the way I've designed it, it all fits.
Okay.
I've, I've never heard of CMS coming in double checking.
I didn't know they had to.
I've never heard CMS coming in double checking.
They, they, it has to be staked, that will have to measure off and everything, yeah.
Just very tight.
It is tight.
Yeah.
So as far as the language, though, as far as thirty-three, thirty-six, thirty-nine, does that, is that really relevant?
No.
To approve, I mean.
Did the, did the size of the building change at all, or were those numbers just incorrect?
The, the building got a little bit larger due to removing the townhomes in the front, which was before your ti, before your timing, from that standpoint. So, so we've got, we've used up the entire space for the, for the apartment, and the apartment is still meeting all of the parking requ, I mean, I still need to meet all the reparking requirements and all of that stuff, so with thirty-nine units, we'll still, we'll still meet all of that. That's why I can't go to all one-bedrooms and put fifty apartments in.
And we still have the requirements off of, of the setback for, um, sight line?
That was gonna be a city, a city thing once the apartment was done. That wa, that wasn't a part of the PUD.
Okay.
If I remember, I remember the discussion, but I also remember that somebody said that's more of a, a city and a police thing once, once the apartment is done, you know, from that standpoint.
And I did ask the applicants to supply a signage plan too, which they did provide, and that's a completely different package, so there's some signage, you know, making that.
So I mean, as far as the PUD goes, that's separate from the number of units, size is gonna be, that's gonna be, so it won't, so that won't affect what we're doing tonight, as long as we get the condition that's on it is all we're really looking for, is upgrading and drainage.
Make sure of that before, because when I start seeing different, I get confused.
Does the difference in the width of the building matter between two different plans? One is two-seventeen and one is two-fifteen?
It shouldn't.
Um, to answer your question, Dan, of getting this kinda late, our year is up Friday. So that, we're trying to get it in before, and we asked, do you want us to file an extension? Or you wanna file, you know, because we don't wanna go through this whole process again.
Right, right.
You know, from that standpoint. So I do apologize for getting it later than when I, and that's why I said I only thought I needed a landscape plan, which, my mistake, so. Ian has been very helpful in making sure that we get things back and forth and, and going from there, and Brandon worked with GGG to make sure we were taking care of a few things, and.
And I just wanted to make sure when I start looking.
Actually, Brandon, I do remember now, Mark can't remember if he sent a survey crew out to figure out what needed to be actually pinpointed, and so he was gonna look back in his records to, to check that from that standpoint, so.
Okay, so as far as the PUD goes, with the condition for an updated grading plan and drainage report shall be reviewed by the appropriate city staff and consultants to determine feasibility of the proposed stormwater pressures, that's the condition we're putting on the PUD, correct? Yep, and that's basically all we're doing tonight, is the PUD for the timeframe for the one year.
I mean, the only other thing I can think of is really, you know, mandating that that gets paved, you know, and obviously, you're talking about getting done for winter, but that'd be the other thing.
Matt Smith is all lined up to come take care of it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Aaron.
You bet.
Anything else from council?
Might be a dumb question, might not be the right time to ask, but has Excel okayed the reti, the pond underneath their lines?
Everything is okay with it.
Okay, all right, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that'd be less of a concern. Um, typically in the accelerations, and I'm not sure I read it errands, but they'll, they'll allow you to do certain things with the net easement. Obviously, building, building's too close is a problem, but a lot of times, having drainage ways and whatnot is usually allowable.
I guess that's because we missed the building part, let's just make sure we.
Sure, you record those things every twenty years so that they're current, so title companies kind of.
Any, uh, anything else? Oh, anything, okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the PUD.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, everybody. Um, we're on to our administrator's report.
All right. I included your packet tonight, you've got a report, and then you've got a number of other items I wanted to run through. Um, we'll just go through the report first. So, um, league is working on a lot of this, so we talked about EMS delivery, so this is something, they've got a task force going. Um, so, you know, there are a lot of issues that were identified by the Office of State, uh, the Legislative Auditor, rather. Um, and so there are some stakeholder groups there, these, uh, Minnesota Ambulance Association, the Fire Chief Association, and the Minnesota Association of Small Cities, um, so they're working on it right now, trying to figure out, uh, a means of dealing with it. I know that Senator Nelson was at the chamber meeting today, and she, uh, she brought that up as well because, uh, they're very conscious of that, or at least some of the members of the legislature are very conscious of it, um, in the outstate part of the, of Minnesota. So, um, hopefully there'll be something that comes out of that from the state with the, uh, the surplus that they'll, that they're talking about again for next year. Uh, service territory acquisition with Excel, um, these sections of town are highlighted there. There's the, uh, section that's owned by, uh, the big old family, north and west of, of the dump road there, and then Zed and Holy Family, those are two that are, are working on, and as well as, uh, we're looking at that area down, uh, by the cemetery that's held by Excel. Um, so we know that there's a timeframe where, before we can acquire the territory from people. So, anyway, um, that's moving forward. Um, the software Tyler, Tyler software implementation, now Paul had a question, a good question about that, so that's moving forward, so we've seen the first billing, uh, for that, and, uh, you know, Linda said, "Well, we got free cameras from them." Well, you know, nothing's free, but, uh, unfortunately, so, uh, we're paying for it, but I mean, that was, uh, you know, everything costs nothings, and, and hopefully, I think our goal right now, and Linda's our point person for it, is to be running some parallel systems next year, and then hopefully cut away in twenty-twenty-five from Black Mountain. So that's, I think, the timeframe we're looking at, we're hoping to have. Uh, there's some draft policies from the league there, if you wanna take a look at those, there's a link there, um, so you could take a look at those. Um, Ian and I had a good meeting with the folks from Ready, uh, which is the Rochester Area Economic Development, uh, group. Um, they're inviting and asking CASN to become more active in the group, or to become active in the group, so, uh, we'll be updating the ED about that. Um, then you've got some meetings there. Um, the other item I have in the packet tonight is a number of financial documents. So, um, as you know, right now, um, we're kind of filling the roles of, uh, the finance department, and I appreciate our staff's work, um, different people are taking on different parts of that job. Uh, one of the parts that I'm taking on is trying to break down the, uh, cash investment summary, uh, for you, and what I wanted to do tonight was to kind of give you a little bit more, uh, I, I guess, maybe transparent view of kind of where the money the city has is, uh, where it's stored, what the interest rates are, that sort of thing, and then, um, I included in the packet also, uh, documents basically just telling you, you know, where everything is, so you can see what CDs look like. I don't plan on attaching that information every month, what I plan on having is this, uh, sort of summary document, which will be updated as things change, the amounts change. Um, and the nice thing about that is it's reconciled every month to our, to our bank statements, to our statements that we get from the, uh, investment firms that we have. So, um, it's not exactly the same document that you've seen in the past, but, um, unable to recreate that one at this time. So I'm doing one that's, uh, my own sort of, uh, document, so if there's any questions, then I'd be glad to take those. As you can see, our primary holdings, uh, banking holdings are at Bremer and Home Federal. Um, we have our general checking account and savings account at Bremer. We have a savings account and a cash sweep account, the liquor store maintains an account at Home Federal. Um, and then we currently have five, uh, well, four different investment firms. You've got RBC, MBS, Forum, and Edward Jones. Those are the four that we utilize for our, our longer-term investment, uh, holdings. And that's all I've got for our.
Thanks for putting that together, Tim, any questions for Tim? Okay, on to the engineers' report.
Thank you, Baron Council, uh, two quick ones tonight. Uh, the first one regarding the twenty-twenty-four street and utility improvements, uh, this is kind of a bundled up project, and there's a map, um, at the end of the RCA, um, that I'll kinda talk off of. Um, just a quick background, uh, kinda how we got here, um, hopefully what we're looking for is some, some direction on moving forward the project for next year, because we've kinda kicked some different things around, was trying to pull it all together and figure out what they think we're doing, so staff has good directions so we can be efficient in, if we're doing projects and whatnot, so. Uh, looking at the map there, so we have, uh, some things. The first being the pavement, um, part paving of the liquor store parking lot in the Legion parking lot, back, uh, this past winter, uh, at the council workshop, you directed staff to ultimately pave the liquor store this year, um, and then the, uh, behind the Legion next year, uh, we delayed paving the liquor store. Um, you may know that we didn't replace some of the asphalt, knowing that we were gonna do it this year, just coordination with the wall construction, so, uh, that's the area in red, and behind, uh, the liquor store, or, excuse me, behind the Legion there is in purple. Um, so those projects, um, are ultimately paving parking lots there, and you see kind of a pink line running the storm sewer. That's called Lake Cas, and I've heard it a couple, a couple of meetings there. Uh, you can see, uh, right on the very southern end of the green strips there on Second, Third Avenue, um, water sits there, doesn't drain real well, so if we're paving parking lots, putting in storm sewer, looking at potentially picking up some of that storm sewer, so that'll drain, um, asphalt roads and standing water's not good. Um, ultimately deteriorates real pretty quickly. Um, so then, uh, ultimately, we talked about some bump outs, that's kind of that pink area there at Second Avenue. Um, the council installed some, some stop signs there as part of the fifty-seven project left them, so some talk about adding bump outs there in that, uh, pink area. And then, uh, staff, uh, when I met with Public Works, and we started looking at what we're gonna be paving out there, we said, "Well, why aren't we just doing Second, Third Avenue, it just makes sense, especially we're doing bump outs, that road's in pretty tough shape, again, it doesn't drain." Public Works has put some pretty significant patches in that road, um, and utilities in that road area, we actually only have one, uh, water main through those section roads, so there's not really a utility concern there, so we talked about paving that. Um, so ultimately, when we met, um, was it last week or the week before, with our financial workshop session, session, excuse me, uh, we ultimately added those projects together in what we're calling the twenty-twenty-four Street and Utility Improvement Project. Uh, what we found, we looked at that, was the, um, enterprise fund, excuse me, the stabilization fund, uh, wasn't necessarily able to support all of the projects. Uh, so Tim and I talked about, uh, where we're at and where things are looking at. Um, we ultimately are now looking at removing Second and Third Avenue from the project. That's about a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project, again, that's the area in green. Uh, removing that from the project, I mean, then ultimately the bump outs also, um, doing potentially temporary bump out situation, uh, seen on the map there, uh, with some bump outs and some planners there to maybe test that and see how it works out with the curb line, see how truck traffic, uh, navigates them, with the idea that when we come back and pave the two green areas, Second and Third Avenue, we potentially, uh, would continue that pavement into Main Street, uh, and pave that area with that project. So, um, ultimately, what does that look for cost? Do you see the cost down there, about six-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars total? Um, and ultimately, we're looking for, again, some direction on moving forward the project for next year, so we can get it together. Um, if we are attaching this work with our veil project, um, just to get some economy scales, uh, we need to get going on that right away in the spring, so we can get. If we are attaching this work with our Vale project, just to get some economy scales, we need to get going on that right away in the spring, so we can get that in as part of the Vale Two project. So we're going to need some direction, so we can get the engineering completed, so. I'll maybe pause there, see if there's any questions.
Question, you said you're looking at taking the Second and Third out, would you be better off fixing those and not doing the parking lot behind the Legion? Which is, you know, which is, which needs to be done worse? Is Second and Third a problem, I mean, because I'd rather spend money on streets than a parking lot.
Well, I mean, that's a good point, based on public, you know, planning and zoning, you know, we got the initial results of that parking study that Ian completed on Monday night, so.
Yeah, which showed we are under utilizing our parking downtown as of now, so.
You know, parking aside, I think we paved that and made it nice, and it was nice asphalt, striped it, I think you'd see that potentially being more utilized, at least be more attractive to park there, something to think about there. The other thing is, you know, you mentioned earlier in the ordinance and Mr. Thompson. You know, that is gravel, or associated pavement, we forced private developers, if there was some development there, they'd have to pave it, so we're in violation of our ordinance, so it's not in consideration. But Second and Third are pretty tough shape too, so I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. I think it's a council, you know, decision direction, what they want to do, they both need it. Happy to include Second and Third, it's just we ran into a potential problem with the stabilization fund, and we talked about borrowing, and then when Tim and I kind of worked it out with the staff, we said, well, let's just pull back on Second and Third. Gives us some time to put the temporary bump outs on Main Street, see how they work, see what the public, public's thought of them are. We already know what Public Works' maintenance side of them is going to be, we're well aware, maintenance is tough on bump outs and whatnot, but they can also see how it goes too, and see if there's different ways to maintain it, so.
Right now.
Now, what I, you know, I showed a couple of examples there of the potential bump outs, we'd bring that back to the council in more of a council approval if we were directed to proceed. We'd bring that back and have a review of that at the time that we kind of wrap up the plans, our preliminary plans for you, so.
To piggyback on Dan's, they, in the winter, they store snow in the parking lot currently, correct?
Yep.
And a big portion of it, would it be easier to snow, snow, or more difficult to store it on paved surface?
Yeah, so Charlie and I talked about, that we talked about where we paved that to put driveway curbs, so I can push it up in the area between the railroad tracks in that parking lot, so that was a consideration. I think the city even signs that as no parking in certain areas, so they can pile snow.
And then, is there a reason not to do bump outs at that second, that Second or Third, that is?
I may say the other intersection of Main Street.
This one here, because, I mean, you've got, you've got a, you've got multiple businesses, you've got the theater, and then to the west, you also have J L H. They have a lot of movement in that area, and if you finish that green strip for road, if we chose to do that, instead you're going to see people that drop their kids off, also utilize that street to drop off, they'll be going around that bump out.
And that's actually one of the reasons why more Tim's, Tim's thought of putting the temporary bump outs on Second to see how receptive they are.
Yeah.
And then by as time to maybe say, hey, they're so great, we want to put them at Third and First and Fourth, you know, all the way through to that clinic, so.
If you put one, and then that, everyone's okay with one, and then you add a second, and then it's too much, or.
Well, you know, I appreciate Brandon's credit there, my idea was to put them on all the intersections, because I thought it would look better, but.
I like symmetry.
But I at least thought that those, those three intersections in the core of downtown made sense to me, once you go to the parallel parking, it's a little bit more visible, there isn't as many concerns with folks being able to see. But to your point, I mean, it's, it definitely is a visibility issue.
I'm thinking speed as well, because you, right now, you're slowing traffic down coming east, well, they won't slow down until the first bump out there, but there's a lot of kid traffic before that.
Sure, I mean, I guess one of the questions would be, do you want to install stop signs on that intersection as well then?
We've seen a benefit from the stop signs being where they're at now, and if we take them out, you'll slow traffic down, but not until you get to that point, you'll still have faster traffic by the theater, by the Legion, by J L H.
Which is no different than it is today, right?
No, that's why I'm saying maybe we add bump outs to slow traffic down.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just saying that if we take out the signs and put the bump outs in on the street that we have signs on, we'll get a good comparison.
We're going to leave the signs in with the bump outs.
You're going to leave the signs and the bump outs?
Positive of the bump outs, it allows you to have those signs a little bit better. I mean, right now, you've got a temporary sign that's way down by the sandbag, that is really a long term, you know, solution, so.
It looks nice.
Do the bump outs include painted crosswalks, or is that?
I think that'd be something we'd want to have in the fall.
Yeah, there's a painted crosswalk on the west side, you can compare. Yeah, you can actually see it. We could include it on the east side.
Yeah, I think, I think that would help with some traffic calming as well, just having that painted on the ground.
Is any of that part of the safe routes to school?
No.
Okay, just, sorry for so many questions today.
I think a couple of things to be clarified, be careful of saying that stop signs are going to slow down traffic, because that's a goal, I mean, if that's a goal, I think bump outs provide more of a traffic calming.
So I agree, they will too, yeah.
And the only thing we've talked about is the false sense of security, people aren't stopping at the stop sign, that's one of the reasons why do you enhance the stop signs that the council's directed to leave into place at Second Avenue? So if people can see it, I think Mayor even referenced the county squagging, they may not even seen the stop sign, I think if we have planters out there in stripes, it'll make it more pronounced, it's more of a traffic friendly intersection, more likely to have people stopping there. Because again, we've got to be careful of providing a false sense of security, people think that people are going to stop.
No, people, people don't always stop, no, we, I dealt with that on Manorville Council on Ninth, no, I understand that.
Well, because it's Main Street, they don't expect the shit to have to stop. I mean, I don't, I don't see much point in putting the bump outs in if we're going to leave the stop signs in, I thought it was an either or situation. I like the bump outs because when it, it narrows the street, so I thought the argument was that that generally would slow people down, and also allows you to get better visibility, because you feel safer pulling out for others that can see. Which would then, I thought, allow us not to have to have stop signs there.
I think the bump outs help the stop signs be seen.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I mean, if we put permanent stop signs in there.
Stop, the people I've talked to that park in front of our building all the time, the reason they like the stop signs is because it gives them an opportunity to back out. Because when traffic's constantly moving, and you're not really sure what's coming, because you can't really see, because of the diagonal parking, whatever, that it was not even necessarily a speed thing, it was more of, hey, in general, most people stop. You can't say they always stop, but in general, they know that if traffic, they can stop, and they actually have an opportunity.
Parallel parking would fix that too, because then you could see in your mirrors whether somebody's coming.
Ton of spots.
I will say, living here the last 30 years, I have, it's been so much easier to leave urban's IV, go south, and then take a right or left onto Main than it's ever been because of those stop signs. You're not worried about if you take a left, you got to inch out a little bit, and a little bit more to see, and taking a right, you don't have to worry about going through, it's just, it's so much easier in terms of not having to worry as much, people might not stop, but at least that stop sign is there, so you stop, you look, you have the right away versus stopping, and you're looking, and if it's a certain time of day, you're never taking a left without those stop signs. Since the temporary stop signs were put in, and then we've left now, left, I've heard more people actually willing to go downtown, that I've talked to said, I don't mind going downtown now, because I know I can get on Main Street and off Main Street, where they couldn't before, they.
We've noticed more people, pedestrians crossing the street there.
Mm-hmm.
Before you had to kind of pick where you wanted to go, and they just go wherever, well, now they know there's a stop sign where presumably people are going to stop, but coming from the apartments, or kids coming to school in the morning and afternoon, a lot more people are crossing there than ever used to cross there, just because there's a stop sign there. So I don't, I don't know, the bump outs, I think, I wasn't a big fan of bump outs when we first talked, talked about, because obviously people that like bump outs have ever plowed snow, Tim. But the stop signs need to get in closer, because up on the corner, you can't see them, even with the sandbag down where they're at now, that's where people just aren't seeing them, they aren't used to them, so. I like the idea of both.
The other thing is, the bump out, I think, enhances the stop sign, and also brings that stop bar where you're supposed to stop now, which is hidden by that diagonal parking, brings it into that intersection, and also makes the crossing shorter for the pedestrians. So I think it's going to enhance that, because not only are cars pulling in closer, the pedestrians, you know, protected by the bump out, and then noticed by people seeing that there's, you know, pedestrian out here, and it shortens up that crossing, same thing we talked on the roundabout, especially at 34, and how short those pedestrian crossings are compared to what it was beforehand, so, same sort of concept.
It's a nice safety for the.
Positive, the positives of safety outweigh the negatives of the look of it or the aesthetics of it.
I will say, a more permanent bump out with curb and gutter coming out there is going to be a lot more successful, aesthetically pleasing than these temporary bump outs, but it could be a reason to put temporary in there to see how it works, see how trucks are navigating it. You know, 16th and Fifth, when we put those temporary bump outs, we learned a lot, we got a lot of pushback from the school, and it's kind of jamming traffic, but we fixed it, modified, now everybody's kind of happy, and it works good, so we tweaked that a little bit, so.
Are they looking at doing the temporary bump outs possibly before winter this year, or what are they going to do for plowing snow with just the temporary stop signs, you go around them?
Uh, it's a good question, haven't thought about that, something we could talk about with Public Works, about striping or something. I think, I think all we're doing is striping and adding planters, so it's something we can just purchase on the side too, and, you know, I got a pretty small dollar amount in there to do it, we don't have to do it as part of this contract, we got Public Works.
That's true.
So we can talk about that.
All right, I just had a couple more comments, I guess, um, I think, Dan, you suggested that if we had to choose between the parking lot and the streets, to do the streets, I don't know if that's still your preference, but I would agree with that too. And I think that if we're going to choose between the two, I'd rather have the streets re-done first, and then second comment would be, um, since it's just striping, could we stripe bump outs on Third and not put stop signs? And see if we get any feedback from that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I still, I don't like the idea of having the Main Street where you got to stop at every other intersection, like, I would never drive down Main Street if I had to stop at every intersection.
I'm more apt to drive down it if I had to stop, I'd feel a lot more safer.
I agree with Paul on that, I mean, I, when we first started talking about it, I was like, maybe we should stop right at every intersection, because at that one or halfway through, it slows it down a little bit, gives people an opportunity to back out, but I don't know if I'd want one, every single one. Right now, people stop, and we hear them accelerate, because that means go, right? It'd be, it'd be a little drag race from block to block.
I mean, when 57 was closed, and I need to go to south side of town, like, come in here, I'd drive all the way to Fifth, just so I can go all the way back up to Main Street with no stop signs, otherwise I'm stopping every other block, you know?
Like, just to that point, traffic engineer here had asked me if we could add stop, it would never be warranted or recommended from a traffic engineering standpoint. So I think that Third here, or excuse me, Second, with Hy-Vee and whatnot, and also continues to the south, 234, has probably more traffic than the other intersections, so to the mayor's point, having that as kind of the, the second intersection of Main Street, I think it's, fits the bill, and hence why the stop signs are added.
And it gives people, pedestrians, bikes, walkers, whoever is getting to the grocery store, or wherever they're going to, a place to cross Main Street without dodging traffic.
For some folks, it may be good if they're not comfortable going through the roundabout yet.
No, you laugh, but there are people that do.
I mean, I think that there is, you know, for some folks, I mean, I think in the fall, the time, they'll get used to the roundabout, but for some folks going through the roundabout, they're, they're not 100% sure, and so it gives them, you know, one block off of that, they can go over a block and come across, and they can cross back.
I had the poor lady yesterday with the walker, who had no idea where to cross, and just went right around the circle. Going to the east, I felt so bad for her, because the traffic was just messed up, but she didn't know, she couldn't see, she had the other big dark glasses on, because it was bright, and she, I don't know if she could tell where, you know, crosswalk was, but she was in the circle, following the opposite direction of the circle to get over to the Aible's Corner, I felt bad for her, but, you know, everybody just sat there patiently and waited, but.
That's nice.
It was nice.
I would like to see the roads before the, the parking lot as well, and not stop signs, but yes, maybe a bump out on the Third there, just to see if it slows traffic down before you get into Main. I just, there are a lot of kids that go to J L H, there are a lot of people that walk across the streets to go to the movie theater, it's just not a stop sign, but I agree, try to bump out, painting, painting it, and see what happens.
So what's the cost difference between the two streets, and I know it's in there, but.
$5,000? No, it's, it's a wash.
A wash?
So the parking lot, or the?
It talks about $350,000 for the, the streets, and $300,000 for the parking lot.
Okay.
We just high leveled, I mean, we weren't, we didn't get.
Right.
But I mean.
But we need to make the parking lot a priority, because we are in violation of the very ordinance you brought up about the paved street, or the paved parking lot.
No, but it's true.
And as the movie theater opens, there's going to be more traffic downtown, so.
Quite frankly, I mean, we, we talked about it, and we left the, the financing meeting, the financial workshop with Michael Bonney, that we were going to likely proceed with both projects, and Tim and I kind of kicked it around and said, well, worst case we go, we end up having to borrow it, so I would, you know, maybe defer to Tim, but it was discussed, we were planning about doing both of them, so.
I don't really want to enter the debt market next year if we don't have to, but, I mean, obviously, it depends on what the council wants to do.
Would it be beneficial to do all the projects at once, cost wise, or if you're putting it off one to two years?
Yeah, my, my opinion, well, one, we're going to enter in a really attractive bidding market, we just bid a subdivision up in Canada Falls, we had 18 bidders on it, I don't know if we've ever had 18 bidders on a $1.2 million subdivision, so I think that's going to carry over into next year, potentially the year after that, so I think that's something to consider. But I'm not sure the prices are going to go down, to be quite honest with you, because price, everything just keeps going up in the seams, but it could be worse, we are fighting both those.
Would it be possible to do a, a schedule in there, one for the, you know, the streets, and then do a separate one, and then we could get, we could kind of pick and choose?
Um, potentially, or we could, you know, bid stuff and rebid, you know, bid another project if it was in there, um, yeah, we could look at that.
I mean, it's just like an option, if we say, okay, here's what it is, if we did the whole thing, here's what each component would cost, and then, you know, if it came in in a favorable environment, we'd say, well, it makes sense to do the whole thing, or if it came in, say.
Yeah, or we would.
Engineer's estimate, which, you know, it doesn't ever do bad, so.
Right, right.
If we put it in there, is we could pull out the Legion parking lot if needed, and we could do that, be pretty simple to do.
I mean, I would love to do it all, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
And borrowing 300,000 or 400,000, 500,000 is not a attractive, it's not an attractive instrument, no, we could look at some bank financing or something like that, but.
What about any other fund loan, or what does the liquor store have for reserves?
So, I mean, those are questions we can answer if, you know, future.
Okay.
We did do a large interfund loan this year, so we used up some of our excess capital with our equipment purchase. Like I said, I mean, it'd be interesting to see what the numbers are in the fall of the time, so.
If we get the numbers, we can, we can choose, but liquor store does have funds.
Yeah, the liquor store, we're planning on, we'll be planning on paying for its own lot, so I mean, they're already going to be spending a hundred thousand on it, so I mean, I hesitate to tap them again for any of the other lots, just because I know that there was a drawdown with the construction project this year as well, so.
Bump outs, liquor store could pay for those too.
Yeah.
If we redo the building, there's no reason to sit down.
Right, well, I mean, I guess, my goal with this whole thing, and you know, you're joking about bump outs, because I know you love them really, my goal is to have an attractive downtown that is a draw for folks, that's walkable, as much as we possibly can. I mean, I know that it's a, it's a, it's a utilitarian Main Street, you know, we have a lot of businesses that are very useful, they aren't necessarily boutiques or things like that, but I think we want to make it as much of a place for folks to be able to enjoy themselves as we can.
And that's why.
I'm all in on the bump outs.
And that's why I like the option of fixing the streets and the parking lot if we can, because that is going to benefit.
Yeah. No, I'm just, I just think that we should look at the liquor store funds, leave them a good enough reserve for their emergency, but then the rest should be used for the profits to be backed up to community.
Yeah.
And they could pay for some of the bump outs, once they're done paying for their parking lot. So.
Take creative. All right, so get us cost on all of it, and then we can.
I think the direction is, is proceed with designing all of it, putting it into a construction project for, obviously, future council approval, let's say this winter, with the idea that the Legion, or the city parking lot behind the Legion is, is putting it as an alternative.
Could be the.
That could get pulled at the time of awarding the contract, is what I'm hearing.
Yep. Sound good to everybody? Yep, all right, thank you, thanks, Brandon.
All right, just one more?
Yep, project.
Project database, real quick, the 2023 street project, that was being paved, so I think that paving is going to be wrapped up here in short order, so we'll be completing that project. And then Massacre floodplain, learning more on the, with the DNR dam safety engineer, providing some clarity, the permitting side of things, so we can move into permitting there to clarify what that flood control project will ultimately look like, because there's some concern there, the DNR didn't even know how it's going to get permitted. So we're working through that, and it's, it's working itself out, it'll just take some time, so, just want to update you that, we are working on that, because we haven't really talked about it lately, so.
On that project, the street project, I was just asked over the weekend, when do they get assessed for that, and when can they pay it off? Somebody had asked.
So those assessments were mailed out to the residents.
Okay.
And November 15th is when those assessments are due to be paid in full, at that time, then the, the city staff will be directed to send those rolls that are unpaid to the county, where they'll be attached to their property tax statement.
Somebody had just asked me, because it's his mother's house, and.
Sure.
He hadn't owned, and he wanted to make sure it was paid before.
And then after that time, you have to go to the county to pay them off, so you get off the taxes, so.
That was good, so, I forgot until you just brought that up.
Question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Brandon, appreciate it. On to personnel, resignation of police officer Jessica Peterson, that letter is in your packet, we'd like to thank Jessica for her service to City of Cassin, and wish her the best in the cities where she's going. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve her resignation.
Make the motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favors today.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries, thank you. Um. Quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many police officers do we have on staff now?
Seven? Yeah, I think that'd be seven, so we just had a new one start about two weeks ago, I think that.
We're authorized for nine?
Um, I think, actually funded is 10.
Including the chief.
Including the chief.
Yep, so nine officers plus the chief, okay. Um, I'll just skip the attorney's report right now, and I'll put it's not important, but those are closed sessions, is there any questions on correspondence from anyone before we go to the closed session? Yeah, I actually sent an email to Tim, we didn't get a wastewater report since, I guess, retirement of, was it Volson?
Yeah, Dave sent the wrong one over, and he's retired, so.
And so we got somebody filling in, it's going to be.